Okay, we are back on the record, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, can you get a motion second and voice both to the all?
We all?
I'll make the real.
Second.
All favor. All right, go ahead, Steve.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, I could be up to next matter. Uh, this is a supplemental resolution. Uh, as for the benefit of the public, there is pending litigation related to this matter involving uh, parties being their with me. Uh, Aaron Duck is the plaintiff. Uh, pro se, uh, the planning board and Equine Properties LLC are the defendants in what is called a prerogative appeal. Uh, basically that was a decision of this board to brand limerick and final site plan approval and under the leave uh, for the Equine Properties LLC six unit residential townhouse developing uh, on property situated in the Quimby Land redevelopment plan area. Uh, specifically lot six, lot seventy-one, uh, address fifty-five Claremont Road that was approved. Uh, the plaintiff or any challenge to that in court is pending. Uh, cross motions for summary judgment of a record uh, were denied from both parties as proceeding to a prerogative grid appeal trial. Uh, however, the court did give indications uh, 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 an issue with respect to acquiring clarification from the Quimby Land redevelopment plan ordinance and from this board's determination in its original resolution as to how it viewed uh, certain provision in that ordinance vis a vis a redevelopment agreement and other legislative determinations by the Borough Council. Uh, so with that in mind and with the case management order of the court dated September twenty-five, twenty twenty-five in that matter, uh, saying in part, uh, uh, the matter was subject to cross motions for summary judgment. Uh, the court found a material question, in fact. Uh, the planning board suggested may consider amendment of its resolution of approval in this matter to address certain concerns identified through the earlier motion practice. Uh, the court actually ordered uh, further supplemental briefing to include, among other things, uh, the effective any of the planning boards amended resolution. Should the board, uh, such as those cheap shoes, should such an amended resolution be adopted by the board? Uh, so that is sort of the the uh, pre, uh, the background, uh, for the context of, uh, the act that the board is going to consider right now. Uh, just for confirmation on the record, the niece Valero, our Board Secretary, uh, and administrative officer, uh, the, uh, my understanding is that, uh, board, Chairman Graham, uh, and Board members Zazarena, Semora, Vice Chair Marco and Geller, uh, were all, uh, voted on the original resolution, uh, remain, of course, then qualified to vote on the supplemental resolution and also that Board members Morrison and Malia have since, uh, watched all the videos of all the prior hearings in this matter and have signed the certification, uh, and that's actually an affidavit, I noted, uh, I notarized it myself. Uh, so that we had who were seven board members who can, uh, vote on uh, whether or not to adopt the supplemental resolution uh, to go along with the original resolution. Board member Walden is not participating, uh, in this. Am I correct?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
So, uh, then it's for the board to, uh, uh, if any, or for a motion, a second and a vote, all vote to, uh, adopt the supplemental resolution or not?
I'll take a motion.
Motion to adopt the supplemental resolution. Um, regarding Equine Properties, application number S P dash twenty-three eight A.
Second.
Roll call. Uh, the eligible.
Mr. Demarco?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Ms. Malia?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Semora?
Yes.
And Mr. Zazarena?
Yes.
We thank you, Mr. Chairman.
David, we have the bills. That are roll over from far away. I see nothing other than the comment that this, uh, proceeding is, um, actually costing significant dollars and nothing, but you would suppose it. Anything else?
So, uh, yeah, look at that comment, I'll lose pay details, nineteen thousand seventeen thousand ninety dollars and twenty cents.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Demarco?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Malia?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Gendal?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yeah.
And Mr. Zazarena?
Yes.
Morgan Paris.
Okay. So we have couple hearings for three different projects, all for the same, um, developer and, um, I guess would be fairly common set of requirements uh, for an amended preliminary, um, uh, site plan. So, um, please, we're presenting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, while council is approaching, I did have an opportunity to review the notice for these three separate but related, uh, matters. Uh, the, uh, I did find the content to be sufficient, I found the notice to be timely served and published certified mail October ten, published October nine. Uh, for actually, um, for this matter, I think the other two matters were, uh, exactly the same as far as content and time being sufficient and time limits, but if I recall correctly, and I'll double check in a moment. Uh, I think they were certified mail and published on October ten, both. Why I remember that, actually frankly scares me a little, but they, they, um, but in any event, uh, they're all timely because they're all at least ten days prior to uh, this evening's hearing, which is what's required under the municipal land use law. Uh, so the most important thing for me to say is at this point, all three matters, you have jurisdiction to hear and decide them this evening, in my opinion, based on the timely, uh, and sufficient content of the notice.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Nicole Magdziaak, M A G D Z I A K of the law firm Day Kidney, here this evening on behalf of the applicant. As Mr. Chairman, you had previewed, we are here this evening, uh, one applicant, but three sites. As some board members may recall, these are three scattered sites which were, um, used in to satisfy in part the borough's affordable housing, third round affordable housing plan. This planning board in two thousand and twenty-two initially approved preliminary site plan for all three sites. Site plans were amended in January and February of two thousand and twenty-four, so last year. Since that time, the applicant has purchased the properties and construction has begun at all three sites. Uh, and just for the record, the three sites we're speaking of are, um, Mine Brook Road, just right across from the municipal building, eighteen Mount Ari and sixty-three Burners. Prior to, um, receiving construction permits, the applicant did go through the resolution compliance process whereby the plans, both site plans and architectural plans, in addition to the stormwater report, were updated to satisfy the conditions of those three resolutions. One of those conditions in particular related to obtaining score and preservation commission approval of the architecture. So there is a variation of the architecture that differs not only from what you saw at the amended site plan in two thousand and twenty-four, but also what you see in your packets this evening. So our architect, professional architect will go through the iterations of that architectural plan set and how it evolved from the time of approval through resolution compliance. The latest set of architectural plans that we are seeking approval for include variations in colors and materials which are designed in consultation with the borough. So the borough has previewed these plans already and has, um, approved what was the for you. Uh, the township or the borough engineer, and it's also been reviewed by, uh, the borough administrator and clerk. So a group of people at the borough who are working through resolution compliance in partnership with the.
You say approved? They're saying they're fine with it?
Yes.
They did not work through resolution compliance, just to be clear.
Right, during.
The big swearing, um, our board professionals that, uh, which I normally do when I swear on all the witnesses, but since we're starting already, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, please raise your right hand. Both, uh, be both, if you swear to God or affirm testimony about giving us truth, the whole truth and not whether truth is clearly, but you already have that.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you.
For Mr. Rightly, to clarify, resolution compliance was completed with the, um, site plan set report and architectural plans that the HPC reviewed, so it is modified from what this board approved. And then subsequent to that, um, additional changes were made to the architectural plans in consultation with the borough outside of the formal resolution compliance process.
Through the board.
Through the board engineer, correct.
Given that.
Yes, and Mr. Rightly also had those plans and, um, had advised us that we are required to obtain amended approval, which is why we are here this evening.
As if mentioned, as did the board chair.
Yes, yes, Mr. Warner, uh, the board professionals. In addition to the modifications to the architectural plans, we are also proposing solar. As some board members may recall, we did have some discussions about the ability to provide solar at these sites during our amended site plan process back in two thousand and twenty-four. It was unclear at that time whether or not we would definitively be able to do that. Since then, the applicant has determined that these sites are appropriate for solar and can provide solars. Uh, so we are proposing that as well. Solar is an accessory use that is permitted by the zoning. The solar that's proposed at these sites is not proposed to, um, be used at the site and to be sold externally. It is only meant to be used at the site and then any excess would be sold. Not sold, but it would go back to the grid, just like a solar on your single family home would. There's no community solar agreements or any third party agreements that are involved in the solar. So it is for use on these sites, so it does fit into the category of being an accessory use.
So it's a grid tie system or is it a full solar system?
Our architect will, um, address the details of this, the proposed solar, yes. And, um, with that, I guess we'd like to interview Sarah Architect, Erin Pumo, so that she can first run through the evolution of the architectural plans and with that, address the solar. We do have exhibits this evening that are elevations that depict the solar on the buildings, just so that everyone can understand where they're going to be placed and what that will look like.
Mr. Chairman, I'll swear in the witness, if I may, the, uh, the, uh, is she wrong, but for all three?
Yes.
And again, my, it's my understanding, which the chairman and I would recommend it anyway, uh, that, uh, are you you're, we're, we're doing this, I believe, as a consolidated hearing. Uh, because I believe a lot of the testimonies be similar for each application. But are you going to do it sequentially or are you going to kind of tie them all three together just for process and procedure purposes?
Sure, so our intent is to first run through all of the changes to Mine Brook, then run through all of the changes to eighteen Mount Ari and then six through three.
So we'll be sequential.
Correct.
And, and, uh, technically then we should, when we finish, we should have three separate uh, decisions and, 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 uh, a lot of three separate resolutions, although, uh, they may look similar.
Yeah, well, looking for any of the public there. I guess we're going to have ten comments at the same time after all three. What was off of that?
It would be the chair's discretion, I think that would be prudent, make the most sense since it's going to be very similar, uh, for each, maybe especially here. Uh, they're all three, all the, uh, direct testimony from the act referred first. And then have per question once by all members of the public as to one vote, two or all three, uh, probably.
When they win.
Yeah.
And then we can, uh, and then we can have one joint for all three public comment here. Think that would be efficient.
Great, thank you very much.
So I'll swear you in, before you pick anything, you swear to God or affirm the testimony you got to give is the truth, the whole truth, and I don't choose. Thank you, please proceed.
I don't know if I can say that still.
Don't worry, we have.
Sorry.
I know that's a bad story, I didn't really.
Yeah.
Is the goal that you have video, I guess?
I mean, yeah, I guess it'll be on the goals, so you guys could see.
Yeah, there are.
So, Ms. Semora, if you can just, for the record, provide your background education and also confirm you were actually here during our amended preliminary final, but that your license is still currently in good standing.
Sure, uh, my name is Erin Pumo, last name is P U M O, as Nicole stated, I was here at the last series. Uh, I have a bachelor's of architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm currently an associate at English Architecture and Engineering and I have a New Jersey, uh, professional architect's license and it is current and in good standing.
And you were previously accepted as an expert in architecture by this board?
I was, yes.
We'd like to offer Ms. Pumo as a professional architect.
Thank you. Okay, good. Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, apologize for all. Wanted to show you the evolution of, um, the various changes on each of, each of these sites, so I'll go through, um, each, uh, each phase that we've been, so.
If I may, are these, uh, different than what was, uh, submitted at least ten days in advance to the board?
No.
Not different.
Okay.
And they, they, these are colored, they're colored. Yeah, let's mark them anyway, whatever, you do them anyway, you want to do them, I don't want to.
I can just.
You don't even have to mark it quite yet, it almost be tried. Uh, but just the first one you start with won't be anyone.
All right.
And when you hit each, when you hit each board, tell them what it is. And so we know what A one is.
They need to push this easel back. And then that. So, it's all. I guess, right.
They teach us what is lost for architecture.
So the board all the way to the left is what we're marking at A one. This was the original colored elevation proposed, um, here a few years ago.
Uh, that they aren't?
The date is twelve fourteen two thousand. Very. Twelve fourteen two thousand.
Okay, before we start?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, the original elevation was comprised of standing seam metal roof, fiber cement siding and an array of, uh, gray tones and off-white, uh, tones and, and white siding with, uh, black windows. Um, I'm going to go to the middle board, which we'll call A one. Uh, the date on this board is eleven eighteen two thousand twenty-four. So.
The colored elevation.
Per mine book.
Yeah, was that for the, was that the amended preliminary final approval?
This is the HPC.
HPC, my pop, so. Yeah, twelve fourteen twenty-three.
So this design here, um, after we received, uh, planning board approval for here, part of our resolution of compliance was to meet which with the HPC and go over, uh, selecting finishes and colors with them. So we actually had a few phone calls, a few, um, emails back and forth, and then we actually met in person uh, altogether and went through all three sites, although I'm only talking about Mine Brook right now. Um, and selected, uh, the colors that you see here and made some changes to the original design. Um, what we ended up changing or modifying was the colors. Um, we added some, uh, blue lap siding. Um, the window style changed, there is an original design, there is a two over two window, so there is a mutton at the top sash and the bottom sash. And, uh, when we met with HPC, um, we decided to go with just a single mutton over, uh, the top sash. Um, and then any other, uh, I'm confused. That's it for the changes here, and then the last evolution.
So there were no material?
No material.
Color changes with HPC, they just said change the window.
Oh, no, that's a change of color, yeah.
Changed color.
If you can see, um, this part here was
Right.
white and then it's blue, so there's a little more around.
For explanation.
The material was still, uh, fiber cement and standing seam metal roof.
Please speak loud and clear for the record.
And then the last board here, we're going to mark A three. The date on this board is four seventeen two thousand point five. So this board or this design is uh, this design is updated from the HPC, um, design uh, by some material changes here. So while the colors look very similar, there are some actual material changes, which are the roof went from standing metal seam uh, roofing to an ash asphalt shingle roof. The fiber cement siding is now thrown as vinyl siding in both the lap siding orientation and a boarding bed and orientation, so the orientation of the siding remained the same, but the material type changed. Um, the windows stayed the same, the window styles stayed the same. And the nature of everything.
Okay, you guys speak louder up there.
And, uh, there was a reduction in the stone here on, um, this front elevation here, particularly right here and the side.
And when you're saying instead of here or there, can you please speak directionally for the record?
Uh, sure, there is a reduction in the stone here on the western elevation and the front elevation. And, uh, those are all the.
Was the only elevation in the MCs?
Uh, yes, yeah. But for the most part, when we went from the HPC approved, uh, colors to here, we tried to pick colors that were as close as possible to what was originally part of the, uh, resolution compliance.
And in the same proportions?
Yes, yeah, nothing of the roof line change, nothing with the building outline, it was strictly color.
Colors, you kept trying to keep the colors and trying to keep the proportion of the placement the same.
The record is done.
Yeah.
Except for the stone.
Yes.
Okay, now you can explain why.
Okay.
So, according to the roof, that's what he's, why? Why the switch from the metal roof to the asphalt shingles?
All right, we have Michael Hummer, the representative of the applicant, and he's involved directly with the discussions of the evolution from the A two to A three. So we can swear him in.
We'll need to swear.
I'm sorry, I want to swear in, please raise your right hand, and if, uh, you swear to God or affirm the testimony you got to give is the truth, the whole truth, and not whether truth is clearly, but you already have that. I think that this, this will count for all three, since we're doing this as a consolidated hearing. Uh, maybe I'm scaring people in, except for members of the public.
Correct, Mr. Warner, thank you.
Um, the primary reason why you see these changes in front of you today was we went through a value engineering exercise with the borough because they are providing financing for a portion of the construction costs. Uh, we were looking for opportunities to save, but also, um, match the original intent and design as closely as possible. And so after we went through this exercise and had our construction team bid out certain trades and get quotes, this was the result where we could, where we could achieve the most substantial savings.
It's money, you're basically saying you're changing this to money.
Yes, it is.
All right, and what's the lifespan of the metal roof versus the lifespan of an asphalt roof?
Not something that I'll let the architect state to.
You can, you, you can get a thirty-year warranty on a asphalt roof, as, and you can only get the same.
Metal comes with a thirty-year?
They can come with a thirty-year.
Not longer?
Mine.
And you said you can get a, a thirty-year asphalt, what's typical asphalt roof?
Twenty-five to thirty, twenty, twenty-five to thirty, difference of what's, you know, included in the contract.
Is that in saying that if, if they're going to go with a thirty-year roof, uh, asphalt roof, it's going to be a thirty-year?
Yes.
Lifespan on vinyl compared to, uh, the composite siding?
Vinyl has a similar, if not same lifespan as, as this party, it's actually very people kind of look down on vinyl, but it's a very durable material and it does last a long time.
What, no, all vinyls on the sand, if you're, what are you, what makes you say that?
We're proposing a, uh, Westlake Royal Building.
I'm sorry, you gotta really speak up louder.
We're proposing a Westlake Royal vinyl siding that's.
That works, that's lifespan versus.
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to look at.
Could you call someone to reply now, or someone call for you, or?
Vinyl fades, vinyl cracks, vinyl works, vinyl doesn't have the same insulation properties as fiberboard. And a very simple search, vinyl siding doesn't necessarily work well with solar panels, has anyone looked into that?
Are you specifically talking about like glare from the panels or?
Glare from the panels and excess heat from the pan, from the panels, um, actually impacts the vinyl.
The, the, the vinyl, I don't well, for this particular project, the, the solar panels are hidden behind this roof. So there, there wouldn't be any type of glare or anything, any interaction between the solar panels here and the, the exterior siding materials.
Just comment, you know, following up on that, because, you know, we see lots of products that, and this roof is constructed where, as we said there, I mean, uh, there, uh, affect, which I think is important to have identified, that essentially the solar panels are hidden by the parakeet.
They will be, yes. I actually have an exhibit I can pull up to show everybody, uh, solar panel exhibit, if you want to mark this as A four.
Oh, what panel is it?
Typical panel section, solar panel section. But is that in turn? This is the new exhibit. It's not.
Like it's a day work, Mark.
And the date on this exhibit is come twenty-two two thousand twenty-five.
So, but there isn't one.
So what this is showing is exactly what you were just talking about, the pitch roof. Uh, forms a parquet wall on the inside where the rest of the roof is flat roof, which will hold all the, the solar panels for this particular site. The parquet wall is about nine foot ten high, so you're not going to see any of the panels from the street or, or from the vinyl.
So you, your proposal then, the only roof there here that has shingles or metal is that area, correct?
That's correct.
And okay, and since it was a flat roof before, right? You would have had drainage and snow and so forth.
That's right.
What percentage of reduction? Because did you realize?
Uh, we went from, well, I'll, I'll speak to it from the side of, since we're talking about it from the bonding perspective with the borough. We went from a five million dollar gap down to two point six.
How much of that is the roof and how much of that is the siding?
I don't know if he's not breakdown of that, but altogether. That's the same issue. And we looked at to see if there's other material changes and none of, these were the biggest ones. All the others were not worth pursuing.
Nobody knows. That's just a number.
Yes.
It sounds good, but. I mean. You haven't shown us. Any quotes. This is a number you're telling us.
Well, we had, the borough had a, hired a, a consultant to review our numbers. And.
Did you provide us with that?
No, it wasn't requested.
So you said right off the bat, you said five million dollar gap? At the time we passed this. Project, what was the gap?
We, at the time, we had, we still had to price it go to market. So that's, that we had an estimate in there.
Yeah.
And we wanted to really understand what the costs were. And part of what drove the costs. Was the rock that we had to remove or that we are removing. From mine brook in the excavation. And it's a very. That slope is very. Conceivable, we call it, uh. You don't realize how much of slope there is. Yeah, it's very deceiving. And so when we did geotext and got more. Information about the soils there, that drove a lot of the costs up. And so in an effort to mitigate the cost driven by that, uh, we went through this value engineering exercise.
As opposed to just cutting the number of units back and, and moving the wall far.
Yeah, that's not feasible.
The number of units provided across all three sites is uh required in order to meet the scattered site in the portable housing plan for their ground. So cutting the units would mean that the borough would no longer be their obligation.
Right, yeah. Yeah, as opposed to, I just don't know how much of it was, but I mean, you know, it's two million dollars to. Cut into the rock, you come back and you say, let's figure out another way to make, to make the ramp. And we don't spend two million, you know, whatever it is, millions of dollars to preserve one or two or three, you know, four units. That.
Well, keep in mind, we have federal, we have federal tax credits committed to this project. So that's, if we were to reduce units. We would, we would have to start all over again. So that's baked, that's not gonna change.
You still stop when someone says, look, by the way, there's something there and it's gonna cost. However many millions of dollars to do it.
Yeah, we indicated and we got the price tag and we went through negotiation process of the borough. And this is the result.
So is the five million dollar gap for this one project or all?
All three sets, yeah.
All three. Which is now down to two point six. So what was the gap of this particular site?
I don't have it that broken down by site. We will get it as.
Can we? I'm uncomfortable that we don't, I, I, I don't know. I mean, you presented this. No one asked for the numbers. They weren't even quite, I wasn't quite sure even from your application. Um, the specifics of even why you were asking. I would feel more comfortable if we had the numbers. What it was, what it is, what is for the roof, what is for the siding, instead of everything being. Just in one bucket, we're making different decisions. And to be honest, this is, this is what your company does. I'm sorry if anybody has any questions, but my, my concern is when we approve this. You said, this is what we do. This is what we do. We do affordable housing.
Correct.
How often have you gotten approval? And then come back? Saying, oh, instead of, we, we didn't ask you to use cedar, we said you started applying fiberboard on.
We don't go through this because we have a lot of time and.
Can I, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Then, when you. When you got a contractor, you win to do this. Do you come back to change it? I, I personally think fiberboard to vinyl is a huge material change. That's my opinion, but we're talking about money, we're talking about time, but. You're not giving us details that really you should have given us in order for us to make. An appropriate decision that's well reasoned. So if somebody has it in their computer, can you pull it up? Do you? Do you have the minutes from the board meeting? Do you have the report that, that the council had? Um, the study they had done? Do you have any of that?
Well, the borough actually spoke with Mr. Zazarin about this to convey support.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, but that doesn't change the fact that for the rest of us, we do have to have the information.
I thought the scope of the planning board was the material changes, not the cost. So.
Well, these are material changes.
Based on your profitability for the project. Okay, that's not a.
I don't know why a two point six million dollar bond going from five to two point six.
Yeah.
Why that's considered a probability. This is, we, we went through this exercise because we wanted to cut the costs. Because we didn't know after doing the geotech, we realized there's a lot more rock there than we expected. And a lot of this. You have to get site control and you have to get your, sometimes multiple rounds of geotech to really get into the ground. And that's the stuff, that's the nitty gritty where you've got surprises.
Well, but this wasn't. If I recall correctly, the discussion of the rock. Was a big part of the application.
Yeah.
And this is not a surprise to you. Again, if these are projects that you do regularly, they're often not on the easiest sites.
Right.
Because so. Again, this is what your expertise is, that this is a, a surprise.
It is surprising.
Given the amount of discussion that went into it when this was approved. I'm surprised that it's.
It's true, because every site is different. With, with, with land, it's, it's very dependent on local geology. And sometimes tests come back, uh preliminary tests come back differently from deeper tests. Sometimes the preliminary test says this might be. The amount of rock under there, this is the soil, let's, we need to do more piles. And so that's what we did. We did more piles, we did more investigating. And when we priced it out. We realized that in, in the ground work was higher than anticipated. And so in an effort to mitigate those costs. That's why we went through a value engineering exercise in competition with the borough. And also speaking with their contractors as we're dealing with this work. Uh, to try to squeeze savings where we can without dramatically changing the look of the building. And this was the result of that exercise.
Were, were there other, so the, the mine or geotext surprise, were there other surprises with the other two sites or that's?
That, that's the one that comes back, because that's the most, uh, that's the. Those most, the most dramatic excavation. There is site work, a little bit of site work that we've had to do on eighteen and sixty-three, but they're not as expensive as. Minebook. Minebook is really the, that, that geotech was um disappointing.
You had a five million dollar railroad roof?
Yes.
On the G.
No, it was that, I mean, it's all one thing, it's all one part of the big project, but that was the biggest cost drive.
So you didn't know what the gap was until you got into it more, but you knew there was gonna be a gap, right?
Well, that's, you know, that's.
A million dollar gap in this project.
Then part of that, part of what was happening is we want to price it out because, you know, a lot of this, until we go to market. We don't have, we're working off of estimates, so we didn't wanna go to the borough and say this is the estimated gap. And then that change again. We really wanted to be sure after we priced it out and completed our geotech work. And once we had that number, that's why we went back to the borough and then we went through another G, a value engineering exercise. To try to cut, bring that five million down further. And so that's a, you know, as part of this, we were able to bring it down to two point six.
Do you, do you know what the? You're saying, you know, for the budget that you originally had, do you know what the gap was between that budget and when you finally went to market? Because the driver for going to market was how quickly you brought this to the town.
Yeah.
There, there was a multi-year gap.
Yes.
In what you put in at the budget and the driver being. You bringing the drawings to us.
Yes.
Do you have any idea what that budget, what was that gap was?
At the time, the gap was nowhere near a problem. And we, we know, and we knew we had to kind of work with the budget to see where, what, what savings we can get. And some of that is we get initial pricing. And then it changes. So it's.
Totally understand that it changes. My question is that gap in how long it took to get. From the budget that you put in years ago.
Yeah.
To when that budget, when you finally went to market.
Well, after we got approvals and we started digging into the more geotext, so we got the approvals.
I, I'm not even talking about geotech.
Yeah.
Material replace the, the party siding, the metal roof. So that, that, that's where you're saving the money.
That's where we're saving the money, but.
Right.
Gap is being driven by. Right.
I'm not talking about the gap. I'm talking about the gap in the material costs. The, the gap in material costs is more driven by the timeframe of, of your budget and when you went to market and get the pricing.
The, this is dangerous. Okay, so I don't, I, I, I don't, I think what you're asking me, what you're asking me is what's the change in material costs? Around twenty twenty-four than that?
Yeah.
I don't have that figured, because I look at it as a, I came in here with the understanding of the, the total gap was at five and you were able to bring it down to two point six. I don't have on which por- portion of that is material cost, which portion of that. I'm speaking to, the reason why I keep going back to geotech, because that was the most shocking. That was the number that really drove.
Was that given to the, was, were those type of breakdowns given to the council or? Or whether you spoke?
Yeah, we, we spoke with Nancy and I know that she and Jack Pitchen. Had those discussions with the council and shared those numbers with the council. And they had a consultant, um. I don't know what's up, you know, with, I forgot.
But that was broken down to that level, so it wasn't just general lumber.
Yes, we had trades and we had materials and we, we, we provided the breakdown. But the, the reason why I mentioned the geotech is that, that's what really blew up the budget.
No, I, I'm just looking at where you made up the difference.
Yeah.
And the one that made up the difference is the material.
Yes.
So. I mean, again, the, you know, a low budget would lead to. Those changes as well. What's the total? For getting the land, right, which is all contributed. What's the total? Total for us to be present, roughly?
Roughly, I think we're at about twenty-five million.
So there any reduction in your fee?
Reduction in on fee. How many is deferred? And then any cost overruns that happens beyond contingency. Comes out of the fee. So it becomes a buffer for any cost overruns.
Those out of ten percent incidence, you know, I guess.
But it's, 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 I think for the stock costs, it's five. And I think for hard costs, it's also five, but. Um, misspeaking.
I'm really pissed that we weren't made aware of this. Geotech. This is huge. Yeah, that's. And did you look at any alternative? Building designs?
This is, we, we based the prices based on the building designs that are here.
Oh, because there was a. There was an effort to reduce the thirty-foot wall.
Mm-hmm.
On the east. Now at these. There were some discussions. Reducing the footprint. And changing the design of the building. Even less in the excavation.
Mm-hmm.
Did you consider that?
Some of that was done. Pulled that wall in, I think they filled in the one corner, I think they got past two. Twenty-five or twenty-six.
And that was, that was even part of the planning process. Sorry, that was all done before we occurred. It was part of, part of that discussion. It's just, they just carried back. We're pissed. At this will not. So. Finances, specifics of finance. Something this magnitude, at twenty-five percent overrun on the project? Yeah, come back. Let's talk about it. It's a pound town like problem. And if that means this design and the thing we approved basically. Has some significant issues. That they have represented that they could do. Okay, and. Especially if the tech, you know, the, the tech stuff is. That significant, we needed to get more people called. And discussing. And not just a couple, not just Nancy and an engineer. With them to discuss. Our own fixes. That just. That just shouldn't be happening. Are any of the changes, do you feel, are any of the changes improvements? Uh, architecturally that it's like, well, this actually is kind of a better thing than.
Well.
What the original one was.
I will say that the. Coordination um with HPC was uh much. Was a good improvement to the original design, so that's a good step. Definitely in the process.
I mean, why is asphalt better than steel? You know, that, that kind of thing. Is it? No, I, you know, I don't.
I can't really, I wouldn't really make that argument. I would say it's just as good as metal, if you have a good installer, a good warranty. Um, also say about the asphalt shingles, we, we um specify and install a uh architectural shingle, which is. Gives it a little more like a three-dimensional look. It's not very flat, so then so. It's an improvement from like your.
It's a multi-layered.
Lower end, lower end shingle.
So premium grade. I guess we certainly wanna know what the. Brand was that you selected and, and confirmed the thirty-year warranty.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else that would be? In your opinion, I, I don't think you can make a case for fiber cement and that vinyl's better than.
I will say that we do end up using a thicker gauge vinyl. It's not, it's also not the lowest end vinyl, but. You can't really make the argument of vinyl versus fiber cement. Fiber cement is a little more durable, but we do end up using the uh. Thicker than each, which is.
So we need to confirm that thicker gauge guy in final. With whatever warranty.
Yeah.
Well, you did with this particular building, the, I guess it would be. Northeast corner is gonna be the murder that's up against the twenty-five foot wall by feet. Correct?
Yes.
Um, so you're gonna have notes on. Uh, on that side at all. And the only reason I know is I have one wall of my house based that way. So you're gonna have mold, you're gonna have issues with all that. As far as cleaning that. I think you're gonna have an issue with vinyl over the fiber uh board. Just because it's a, a, a more of that, a more of us product.
You may have to clean it after you move it, fiber cement, which is a maintenance.
Hmm.
Which are maintenance costs that you guys have.
Right.
Considered.
And something that I just wanna reiterate is, um. We were, we also have a property manager within the same company, so we're long-term owners. We don't sell our properties, our portfolio stays with us. So any issues that come up with any of these, I mean, we're gonna be owning these for over thirty years and we're gonna be maintaining them. So it's, it's in our interest if there is a problem with the vinyl, we're gonna get it addressed.
No. Or sorry, it is, I know it's.
Okay.
You know, like when your property manager, one owner, you're three properties, part-time. Means full-time, but they're part-time.
Yeah, we have a superintendent that lives in the building.
But, but when you found that the eastern side of the property, you look, you know, you're coming around. Did you try moving the building to the west?
No.
Why?
This is the, this is the footprint and design that we presented and our approval on, so that's what we worked with.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but now you've got a twenty-five percent overrun. So you come back and you say. We found rock. And we would like. To get this building shifted.
Not, not when we're here presenting a solution.
No, when, when was the rotten notice?
Uh, we did a lot of the geotech after the approvals in twenty twenty-four. So mid twenty twenty-four, then we really got a better handle on the rock.
So say from June twenty twenty-four till now.
Yeah.
Been working with the town or somewhere there.
Yeah, and I, throughout the summer, we really tried hard to get better pricing and beating up first contractors, somebody in bids. And so really at. And so really at the end of the summer, as we learned, we had a final number and what that gap would be and we've worked with. That was about the end of the summer, I would say that all exists, yeah.
The point was, and it's a missed opportunity, you could have changed the the floor plan up. It's still that and just slightly, it's slightly changed at eighteen hundred, it could have been changed. As an alternative to spending money to just knock out all the wrong. So that that shouldn't have happened. Okay, it's like, I can understand human why, why that might be the direction. But it should have been more people and with that significant an over, ceding a contingency dramatically. It was uh. Inappropriate for that not to be a a broader discussion topic, for that to be compartmentalized the way it was. Anything else on the materials that? So in your opinion, the material substitution are. Close enough.
Yes.
I think is what I can say, and that you would make sure that. The vinyl was heavy duty vinyl and that the asking the same shingles were, as you discussed, the. They're really like multi layer, all those same shingles with thirty year warranty. Uh, we haven't gotten an answer back from, um. Our H B C because we didn't have enough time. Any, any other? Comments?
With the uh solar panel.
Okay, we'll switch to select.
Just the. I'm trying to see, are they? The angle of them, would there be any effect of the, like, would the uh houses up above there? Have any adverse effect? Um.
No. Southern exposure, they have a southern exposure, they do have the. The panels are are um angled, you know.
Are angled slightly, but they're.
Pick up the sun.
Yeah, I just was wondering.
They're not automated, they're bigs. And, um. I I'm sure it's in here, the drawing course on the line drawings, is this? It's thirty three kilowatts, it looks like. Um, is this a grid tie or are there batteries at all involved with the system?
There's no batteries.
So it's pure grid tie? Kind of a real issue with creating this large. Substantial a solar system and having it be only grid tie, which basically means if the power is out, which it will go out.
Mm hmm.
I don't think you've got generators on this property.
We don't want to do.
Okay, and the solar is dead, as soon as the power goes out, there's no value to it, and, um. This is an addition and. I think that. I guess the only thing I could reasonably ask you to do. Is to engineer the provision, the potential to provide. A self contained solar system, uh solar based system, like uh some kind of storage, battery storage devices, they're all improving and so forth, but.
Yes.
It's possible just by the way you lay out your distribution panels and your bus lines and all this other stuff that you could say, oh. This is where I would put, I think you have a solar controller in this, this is part of it, but it may just be solar load, there. Looks like a ton of mini inverters that you've got. Like one per panel, almost like you've got an inverter and that's all feeding something and synchronizing.
We can look into battery storage.
I I think it's unreal, given the cost constraints, it's probably unrealistic at this point to ask you to spring for any kind of significant battery capacity, but. Engineer it in a way where you could put in. Battery capacity. Um. As part of that, think about, I I don't know where you're. If you're probably running all this stuff from this, from the. Roof down to the garage level, I think to the lowest level or at least, but but look at that too, if there's. I don't think there'll be any need for additional conduit or anything like that normally. But think about where you're putting these controllers and like, oh, well. How much space might be available, could we take a parking? Day or something and put in, um. The storage capacity.
And we'll look into that and see the state of the.
Purchasing and installing solar.
It's, um. It's a little bit in flux because of the policy that's changing around solar credits, cuz that was part of it and. Um, so I don't kind of figure out if there's something. But that is something that.
So you're not financing the solar, it's not one of those solar company, come in, we'll put the stuff on your roof and it's your. You're you're buying me equipment through a contractor, but let's say, but it's yours, you only, you're not paying, making these payments, they're not.
Mm hmm.
Paying eleven cents per kilowatt hour to a solar provider, again, it's your, if there are solar credits.
Mm hmm.
They're yours to have and deal with. You're 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 testifying that you're. Essentially the solar provider, and then you have grid tie.
Hmm.
I'm just, we're questioning. Said it wasn't feasible, that's why I'm just curious.
As to what the total cost would be, so.
But to me, it's an arrogance that you came in and someone spoke to Mr. Zes, you know, so the rest of us. Don't need the information. I I.
Well, roughly, what do you think, or just, it's like, you you are no roughing up the solar installation. Costs.
Yeah, I don't. I don't want to speak, I don't want to get the wrong.
No, if you don't know, then it's fabricated, so. It's like five hundred panels, these are like four hundred. Four hundred watt panels, I think, or something like that, so. Yeah, solar modules.
You received the original approval. In October of twenty two. When did you have the? Knowledge of the rock?
After we received approval twenty twenty four, the amended approval.
So you didn't do anything in twenty two? You didn't do anything for the two years?
We didn't unload yet and we didn't have, we were financing everything for pre development, so, and so we were. Further along in the financing. We couldn't.
So it shouldn't have been financing, you have. Yeah, we were compelled off to 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 pass this.
Yeah.
Deadline, only day.
Yeah, the affordable production plan funds that were, that's committed to this project was made possible because of.
Be out those.
Eight point eight, yeah, eight point nine million.
Then this, the applicant submitted for those task artists. Based on the time, and then these three girls.
Yes.
They could have not been.
Yeah. And those production fund, it's because it originates from private response, there is a federal, so. That was, that was a, the urgency and that urgency still exists. Um, but.
But but when it's in twenty two. You didn't know about the rock.
Correct, not not to this extensive, not this extensive.
I remember significant dis- discussion about the rock.
They, well, they, it is, but I very much need rock, it was. Phil, that had to be.
But we talked about the fact that we would have to.
Well, we presume it was wrong because it wouldn't be there if it wasn't wrong, it would be, there would have been, we went down through.
And part of the savings is is because we're, we're doing blasting instead. And so part of those savings is also attributed to that, we were allowed to do blasting and we got state approval to do.
But you received site line approval. In twenty two. And then you. You receive final twenty four. Coming between twenty two and twenty four, you had no idea that there was rock?
And we didn't know that it was this extensive.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that answer.
We we didn't know it was this extensive.
The prices have gone up. Just like. Running off.
Yes. That wasn't on our side.
So, but so the delay. Could have been. The cost of the rock could have been realized if you were, if you started early.
Well, some of that was because the affordable housing production fund guidelines were not released. And so, and that was gonna be the big key to making the financing work. And the state had to really, cuz it is federal funds, so they had to go through a whole. Process with their attorney general to make sure that. The guidance fit the federal guidelines or the use of the current virus ones, and so they took a long time to come out with it, and they came out with it, they applied. And they were oversubscribed, um, but. I mean, we got the financing, that's the, it's the key.
But you did that. When you prepared the plan. You came to the plan, right? You laid out the advance.
Yes, we.
The borrow dance. So could it be, could the lack of finding the rock? Be on your time? How many solar boring were originally done on the rock weight?
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
I think.
Maybe it's just me, but or the acoustics in the room, but uh one big. So and and part of it may be that. Not everyone projects the sand.
I think there were three borings done, I don't have the report, but I think it was.
And as far as the location of the boring, would. To the best of your knowledge, would they have been where their painting wall was proposed?
They would have been at least one there and then you locate them throughout the building and a couple other various spots.
Then how, there, I'm assuming there were more boring done, or you just found rock and that's?
Uh, I. We have a pre pre construction director that handles the learnings, and so I don't have the, sorry, I wish I had that.
Good, I'm just, I'm just, again, you have wondering, you you have a property that's, how many feet? What's your frontage on that property?
Three, uh, little, three hundred feet.
So three hundred feet and you did one of the, maybe somewhere towards the middle of that retaining that. Just to get a budget or to figure.
Their, their original, yes, that'd been, when whenever they were first done.
So you had time from twenty two to. And twenty four to look at changing the shape of the building.
The borings weren't done in twenty two.
When were the borings done?
Twenty four.
Twenty four? After the approval, I'm assuming?
I mean, yes. In amendment, right?
It's, it, I think twenty two, I think it was the preliminary approval and twenty four was the amended preliminary. And final approval, correct?
Yes, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so we, cuz sometimes people are throwing around approval, approval. And we got, you know, just like sometimes people throw around word site. And they might, we might not know if that's, you know, just one lot or an entire redevelopment area. That creates an ambiguity, which could lead to a chain of material fat and not.
Those two points, though, were you using for estimate of the cost of interior?
Well, was, if, I mean, we had an estimate before, um, going into it, and the way this typically works is, um. Especially early on, we do estimates based on other sites, on what our average per stair foot. Cost, sorry, and that's, it's while it's a metric, it's not, it doesn't take into account unique site work and that's. Something over there is, we just can't, every site's a little bit different and that that figure can really change the map. And so when we went in, went in with initial financing, it was based on an estimate and then. Um, our director of reconstruction, Joel Wallace, he goes through and looks. Looks at the plans and bids and mounts trades, gets their initial uh costs. And he also does more geotech uh on top of the initial. Uh, just to reinvestigate areas that might need more clarity and sometimes we get that from when we speak with. Site contractors, they'll say, well, we need more information on this, so well, it's it's a bit of an iterative process. And so as we go through that process, the number continues to get refined and, um, it was really in twenty twenty four when we were able to get a more solid.
And that process doesn't happen after just the, so I guess to take a step back. When you're filing applications for affordable housing trust funds or production fund, I mean, the the money that the state and federal government set aside. For affordable housing projects, the reason that they're split in a preliminary only site plan and then subsequently. Applicants come back for either amended preliminary final or just final site plan only is because preliminary is what's required in order to file the application for funding. So to get in line for funding that is limited, because at this point, some of those programs didn't have any funding anymore. Uh, the requirement is to have preliminary approval, so after you know whether or not you're funded in that round. And it's a, an annual round, the production funds were on a rolling basis, so in theory, you could potentially. Make more than one round in the year, um, but after you find that out and you know you're gonna be awarded, you know you have the financing. Uh, based on those initial estimates, that's when further testing, further uh engineering of designs happens, so that. Which is why we came in for amended approval, because it changed from preliminary uh to the time we had final.
When you're putting in for that funding, are you specifying? Materials and things of that nature, or is it just a general number?
It's a general.
So you're not specifying any material, any of anything?
We, I mean, we provide renderings and floor plans and the, cuz this was initially nine.
Renderings like this that show materials or?
No, it's more visual. It's not, it's not down to. This material's this, that's standing with, not to that level, the nine percent applications, this was originally nine percent until we went to four. Um, it's a competitive process and so as. As Nipoll explained, um, you go on with estimated figures, um, floor plans. A preliminary approval, you go in and get the nine percent credits, cuz that's a big financing piece and that's. Until you get that, it's really, you don't have a real project yet, and that's a key part of the financing, uh, but, um, you know, but what happened and. The financing got difficult and then they came out with production funds and as part of that. Um, the state said that you can't use nine percent, so that you have to switch to four percent tax credit, so we have to do the exchange and switch. Um, but without the nine percent, we would not, I don't know what it would be, cuz that was really the place to put her.
So I. But you started off then in there with a five million dollar gap.
Hmm.
And you valued engineer. Who this design change to knock off one point four?
Yes.
How are you making up the other two point six?
That's, that's, that's getting bonded. The borough's bond of the. The borough's bonding for the two point six.
And it would be five to two points, would be two point four, but they're they're knocked off, right?
We went, we went from five to two point seven.
Yeah, so two point four.
So I was just trusting your math, that would.
Don't trust the material there.
We don't have any calculations, we don't have any.
No, we don't, I'm sure.
No, but there's still a gap regardless of weather, so even though. We compromise on the design standard, right, as you keep that important to this board, right, quality and longevity of the wall. Right, you got, you have three hundred foot of frontage. Pretty much in the entrance, like town, you come in, I think there's a concern that it won't last long times. Us who've been here. Want to be here long, longer, um. There there's, you know. That there's still that gap anyway.
Well, the two point six, um, it was originally supposed to be trust funds, but with the way trust funds were. It's reliant on other market rate of the homes, the new floor and payment to the trust fund, so. Unfortunately, there wasn't enough to meet the full two point six. So there is a portion of that's getting bonded. I don't know what that portion is.
No, no, I, I, I. Sure, I need to, that, that remaining half.
Yes.
The other. Did your agreement with the borough. Required certain time limit or time. Points, you received the approval in October, the initial preliminary in October twenty-two. And, and then it was two years later, which got the, uh. The revised preliminary and fine. Were there contractual obligations to meet certain deadlines?
Yes, and we're, we're in compliance with the development agreement.
And what were they?
I don't have those details. If I'm gonna know, but what I can tell you is if we were a violation of the development agreement, it would be a different story right now.
Because obviously, the time delay was, I would create. Much of the additional cost. But within two, for two years, prices went up.
Actually, how, what he's not saying, what he's saying is, it's the rock, this is what.
The, the cost of the rock went both, though.
He doesn't know that, because they didn't, he doesn't have any numbers.
Okay, no, for the rock, it's also a cheaper big and glass, so it isn't, there's an idea about the rock. He can't give them to you, but he, you see, I'm.
But, but they're presenting. Okay, bye for it. Uh, again, you know, maybe I don't have a problem with changing the roof, but have a problem with changing the siding. But I don't know what that impact is economically on the town, because. Someone told you Mr. Zazarino knew what was going on, and nobody else needed it. I'm having a really hard time. Understanding, uh, we have a responsibility, it is our town, it's our. The, the economics impact all of us. But I, I have no confidence in the numbers you're trying to present, because I have nothing in front of me. And when anyone asks you for details, you don't have the information, and nobody. There's a report, but nobody can pull it up on their computer, so clearly you didn't read the report, or no one sent it to you. Or maybe they sent it to you, but I, I, I.
Well, I would encourage you to speak with Nancy, because she's very.
There's some legal issues that come into play every weekend, and that's when it becomes, when it comes upon me to say something. Uh, as the board attorney. The, the, um, so, what, what, if I may, Mr. Chair, one thing is that. Um, anything having to do with this ending, amended preliminary and final site plan. Uh, uh, application hearing process will take place in an open public meeting. Duly noticed for this year, uh, number one. Uh, so, I, I respectfully, everyone should be told, go talk to Nancy, or Mel, or Harry, or Sally, or anyone else. Um, but, but it should happen here, um, because that's the law, uh, number one. Number two. Um. It, it's a little. Less than garden variety. For our board, when we're dealing with this issue, because normally we focus on, um. Site plan considerations, and when there's deviations for relief. It's all focused on planning elements, zoning regulations, and benefits from a zoning and planning perspective. And oftentimes, cost is not part of the calculus when rendering decisions. In land use, for, on land use applications, and there's.
The primary decision, you're, you're correct, but.
For generally, however, in this particular instance.
And in others.
The reality is, is that the cost is somewhat of the driver of why. In the context of a one hundred percent affordable housing project, where it is now, uh, they've come. Uh, uh, I guess in essence, not together with the borough, but the borough is involved. Um, and, uh, and are requesting these modifications. So that's why I think the board, maybe you've just stayed in the obvious, but, uh, and that's a forte as well, but, 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 uh. The, 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 uh. That, the transparency is, is that there, as we're encountering, there may be some changes that. They, we may be struggling with from how is that benefit zoning and planning perspective, or, you know, how is that better? Uh, but, but the reality, I guess we're hearing, some of it is just a necessity, at least that's the contention. Uh, uh, from the applicant, and I guess the applicant saying it's a necessity, both. It extended impacts the applicant and the borough. So it puts us in a little bit of an unusual position as board members, I just want us to focus on that.
You know, part of it is that the, the council should be part, they are the applicants as well. Through these, and we need to get some clarity on that, because of the, not, not just them, but, you know, but the council. Nancy, or someone needs to be here representing the town when these things happen. Going forward, when there's this agreement, whether it's Palmer or this or whatever, we're gonna need. Council representation, not just the applicant. And just going forward, because it's, there's too much at stake and too much money. There's lo-long-term precedent for the minimalistic aspect of this request that they're making, which is you're changing materials. That comes before us, and we decide whether they can change their materials. And they present the case for this is why I want to change the material, which they're doing. That's totally in our scope, changing the materials.
Absolutely.
With the guidance of HPC and so forth. However. I mean, this is pretty massive, this, this change, right? So it's all, it's serious, it's not just, oh, I've got this house that I. You know, or, you know, I want to change, or this small project where I want to change, it's not just eighteen mile area furnishings. It's much larger. Um, we're not obligated to improve a material change for the profitability of the project. But there are two, there, there's a combined representation here, it's, it's shooting article itself, right? It's, because it's the borough and it's the partner, the developer. So maybe we just have to graduate it back to that, and with a reprimand carried forward that. We should have been involved as soon as the tech came back. Um, we should have re-engaged, because one of the considerations should have been, what could we do within the realm of the plan? In terms of mitigating the tech, as opposed to let's just pay more money for it, but figure out, even if it's plastic, figure it out, let's just charge ahead and knock that, knock that stone out. There are other choices that could have been made. Um, and maybe they weren't, were dismissed, but. We know that there are other ways to, uh, shift the footprint to affect the amount of, of build that had to be removed. And that's expensive, I mean, it's. I think it's like forty thousand dollars a unit, essentially, in excess cost. No, it's not, it's because it's, your, yours is a bundle price for all three projects, so. It's not true. Probably twenty minutes. Um.
There's also not a breakdown. One project is larger than another, why do we have to change them all? You know, again.
Right. There's not, there's not enough granularity for us to decide whether we're willing to let the developer change the materials. Which is our decision. And. We, we just don't have that kind of detail, the, the discretion detail, we see that when you mask it all together, it's something, no, let's suppose the vinyl, well, it's an extra hundred bucks. Well. It's not, obviously. And, and we have to be recognizing. It's the facade basically, and, and the shingles, that's the whole thing, it's just different components of the facade.
I see.
But get the stone, I'm not sure that, I don't know what the stone, that's only in a couple little small places, I'm not sure that that's sort of a. But.
I, there's a difference between the two, the stone, the signage.
Well, the second one moves, the third one moves this.
There's still stone, it's just, just gonna stand along the front here.
Sorry, you're doing the here again, and you're trailing it again.
Still, there's still stone on the front elevation, it's just reduced in height. And then there is also still stone on the, um, side elevation, which is the western elevation, but again. It reduced from the windowsill down to probably five feet off, off grade, but hardly just this.
So not so, not so sure we want to agree that. For instance, um, refine, you know, vinyl, I gotta use vinyl fine, maybe, so no. But we don't have to be.
And put this out to the next meeting and request specific information, like all the information we don't have. Should have taken.
Well, I, what's our next meeting? Right, and then, this meeting, we're in Thanksgiving. Yeah, we can, we can hear.
Um, Mr. Chairman, i-if we're gonna do that, would it make sense to? Get as far as we can, so that we can get all.
I think, yeah, make sure they know what we need.
That's what I'm saying, yes, there may be, there may be more questions and requests coming from the board if they present more. With the, with respect to the other two projects, I'd ignore. That's silly question. So, the building traditionally has four sides, you're only showing one. Show the block side when you come back.
Doesn't take much to make. I'm curious what side looks like. So. In the essence, you already kind of agreed to consider is, would like to consider where you would be. Placing a battery storage room in your design. Um, we, we'd like breakdowns, right? Not specifically like for that exam, physical example, but for the.
What percentage of it got feeded from the stone?
Something that gives us a sense of. Um, some of this, this photo will take, Anna. Oh, I'm going, I don't understand how they can have almost thirty-four kilowatts of DC power. Which inverts to thirty-seven kilowatts of AC power. Uh, if you've got a way to do that. We shouldn't be doing that shit, you're getting something else, like, you know. Selling free power, um. So, building business, or, yeah, just kind of check that out, that doesn't seem. Uh, it could be, well, yeah, of course, but you just don't know. It, it's more like, I, I can see, oh, well, it's twenty-seven kilowatts of AC power with, with the inverters.
I'd like to see where we're sort of. And it was all. What, sort of one, where they were done, and it was all.
And the, and the time. When.
Did, did you price out? The, the fiber board?
Yes.
So you had that and.
Yeah, the comparator.
Is there something, the windows, you're not changing the trim on the windows, or you are? No, no, the window style change, uh, sorry, stayed the same from the previous design.
Well, not from the original.
I think it's the same table, it's just on the same column, and the savings, and the size. How big it was, and the percentage of the savings, just a couple more columns in the spreadsheet, we, we, we do. Set the low for each project.
And the changes in the other two projects were was the same?
Yeah, they're the same.
Right, to what degree has the tectonic, that has the, um, I mean, I can drive by and see. We're not very close to street, but. If, if someone miraculously said you don't have to do something there, the, the, how far along are you in terms of? Cost of excavating that, it looks pretty early.
Yes, or, or possibly ahead because of the federal deadline, so.
Like it's almost, I mean, you take a lot of, it isn't like, oh, we're like ninety percent done in terms of excavating. But not, not.
I, I don't want to give a number, I, I, we're, we're pretty far along with excavation, but I don't know if it's ninety or if it's fifty, so.
It would be nice to just know that, if it's fifty or something, you know, because. We might be able to lift the building footprint in one way or another, uh, we did before, so. But in terms of moving rock, it's like, oh man, it's that last ten percent that, you know, that's gonna really cost, right? If you're ninety percent along, then.
You're already spent the five million.
Yeah, then, then, what are we doing here? What, but it's not fun.
Well, the extras were five million in expedite.
Oh, when you come back, I know I sound a bit not just, but can you please have the information?
Yeah. I said I would be.
I don't want to give numbers, I don't have the numbers.
Well, I thought, the, just to be clear, I came because I thought the five million to two point six would have been enough, I didn't realize that you wanted a deeper breakdown. Come provide that, that's not a problem. I just couldn't tell you.
About the project.
Yes.
I mean, the history of the project, would it be helpful to have maybe the construction?
I think the key is the substitutions, we need to know that the substitutions are viable substitution, like. I mean, she's sort of gone through.
You want to see stats.
Firm that they're there, hopefully, we could get thirty years shingles, but, well, by the way, we only priced in twenty-five years ago. Um, there's that, that the substitutions. You're making are equivalent, I mean, there's, we'll, we'll have this store, hopefully, answer. Uh, by the next meeting from, uh, our store, in terms of anything else. We've got, they deal with the siding and the root. Um, just what are the savings and, and, and the stone, I guess those are kind of the three, if there's something else in there that we're, you know. Then, how much was each one estimated, and what did you, and just show off what you did, I mean, okay, you knocked out. That's, that's great, that's one you're not spending, so. Yeah, why do you sell it since we're going?
Would the bar be available for the full five million?
Absolutely, so, and that's one of the things I wanted to bring up, the affordable housing process, in my opinion, is broken. And the reason it's broken is when it puts, you know, a lot of pressure on the local government bodies board, who. Who, you know, uh, back up these projects at the end of the day, and, you know, I, I, I understand. You know, preparation with, with the, you know. Changing materials and, you know, variety things, I will, any information I can, and I, I do thank you all. You know, for continuing to look, pursue the cost savings for the borough here, I mean, here two point four, we obviously all realize that that's. Serious, and, you know, this, you know, later, later in the process, I understand, everyone's. You know, front rate in that as well, I mean, your route, you haven't, you know. Gone for, yeah, I mean, total, but then. Review the history of the project, but I, I, I do, you know, thank her. Your question, any, you know, any information we can get to you all, and if you please request the, you know, product team here, uh. I think, you know, this is something we want to say, pursue these savings for the borough, and it's not something that I'm gonna be about, and it's, um. Thinking of the, the whole, I could go all night about the whole system, um, but I, you know, I, I understand your concerns tonight. Please let me know anything I can nip them off. Well, the, that's the response, whatever the numbers are that have been proposed, or. Dynamized, for those, like, that will show the panels, I mean, I.
Don't just give us.
Since we're in trouble, and, and we're actually curious about this, those. And, and, and someone will say, well, whatever the room, whatever the intended numbers are gonna be.
And as mu-as much as possible, it's, it's kind of hard to tell the aesthetic differences from those little, you know, squares between. The previous material and the material, but to the points that we've made, and these are things that we're gonna be living with for. Thirty years, our main thoroughfares coming into the town, so. Thirty years on main thoroughfares coming into the town, so if there's a way that we could. Give us a better sense of what the trade off is aesthetically by making these changes, it'd be helpful.
The standard requirement from an architectural perspective and from the story, you're supposed to have samples of for now. That's the stick. So to the extent you can do that. I had one craving, it's like, it is for the fiber, for the vinyl, um. At least that, I think, a steel roof versus a shingle, I mean, you can bring the shingle, you know, and they will cheap. But that's, that's the norm, the norm is, we wanna change it, we look at color, we look at the, uh. The facade looks like, we look at the material. But if that's possible.
Exhibit A to B.
Okay, A one to A one to.
Three.
Yeah, because both going, I guess that would be, uh, east to west. Is. Very dark, it starts with the back, five or six windows, whereas on the, uh, the first exhibit. They, um, I'm sorry, uh, no, the one that you stand in front of. Yeah, not the, not the roof, just the other line.
You're right. The elevation of this line was actually lowered.
No, I'm actually.
Sorry, are we looking at?
Yeah, yeah, the gray there starts three windows in, but then you look at your next exhibit, it starts.
That was, um. That was part of the site line change.
For for the meeting originally, meaning that it was not a period fiction of the store.
Oh, okay, I think they had a conversation more of it.
Yes, yeah.
Um, probably a sense of urgency, you know, like whatever, you know, we're used to it now. The urgent, you gotta get this done, there there is, you know. I mean, this, if we carry it, it'd be curious, two weeks and. Those more than that. So. What are we up to saying here?
Would it make sense for them to do a quick one with the other two?
Yeah.
Well, there's leaders here. I would be very proud of the door. Thank you, Bob, for letting me start later. Just have to go over another row, it's square.
Take any chances.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you move for now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which box?
Eighteen nine.
Eighteen nine.
Okay, uh, so we're gonna look at the, uh, first exhibit, you know.
There are like, just a eight, eight more and on, literally eight five. Money being down area, and they're qualified for all three. This one, then this one, the all three, so.
Uh, this exhibit A five is dated twelve fourteen two thousand three three, and it's a colored elevation.
I'm sorry, the phone.
Fourteen, uh, two thousand. So this board depicts the original approved elevation for building one, which is the building closer to, uh, Mount Mary her. Um, again, these are all the same changes produced as we discussed previously for mine work road. Um, the the color scheme changed from the original approval. To the HPC coordinated, um, set. Um.
Well, the roofing color change, as you've identified previously.
Well, I'm just going from the original approval to historic, yeah. Um.
Eighteen nine.
The historic.
And this was the approval. By the, um.
HPC.
You have to give me more than HPC.
Uh, color really one color elevation. And the date is eleven eighteen two thousand twenty four. So again, as part of resolution compliance, we met with HPC, selected these, um, colors. The one other change that happened between the original approval and HPC is the window style. The window color changed the same, but this window has three mountains on the top stash as opposed to.
I'm sorry, this window is.
Oh, all the windows on the building.
All.
Is that, that's clear, right?
Right, and all the windows what?
All the windows on the HPC approved, uh, elevation are different from the original approved. And the fact that the top stash has three mines and the original proof has only, uh, one. And this is actually a change suggested by the historic commission. And then as you go from the HPC elevation to the value engineered elevation.
Eight seven.
With eight seven. And this is also building one colored elevation with the date of four seventeen two thousand twenty five. So the changes between, uh, the value engineered elevation and HPC in original is again, we went from fiber cement to. Vinyl siding, standing metal seam roof to an asphalt shingle. And actually, the stone veneer stayed the same on this one, there was no reduction in in the stone veneer design on this building. What you do see now, uh, on this are solar panels, which we're proposing solar panels on this site as well. And they will be visible because they're on the solid facade, there's no flat roof. On either building in, uh, the means, it is in boundary, so.
I think one, one thing that will, if the chairman, one thing we'll have to do, uh. Since we had memos from our board professionals that relate to solar panels, at least as to the one that they knew about before. Yesterday or today, uh, because now, well, we're gonna have solar panels, so. We're gonna need to obviously have the memo to regret, I think, if if either now or the next time. You can just let us know if you can stick to all the items in all the memos or where you can't. What you can and can't stick to and and why, uh, just to abbreviate things, expedite things, make it efficient, actually. Uh, so that we do that, that that would be helpful, and I suspect our. Board professionals may have updated memos with respect to the solar on the two projects that they only just recently about add about. But regardless, at the very least, though, I suspect we'll have the same questions that they had as to the one. The other two, if not more, and or different quite. So let's just make sure we can, so we'll hit that next time. Of course, the more you can agree, the better for everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Um, and then the last point I'd like to make is, um, we tried to keep the colors theme similar as to the fiber cement versus the. The vinyl, but I do think they look very similar with the the color palette at least. Um, does anyone have any question?
So is that Appalachian sky?
That is, yes, Appalachian sky.
Smoke.
I didn't have that mark crayola lot.
I was thinking it's completely blue or something, now it's, uh. Cold.
But the the question regarding the, uh. I guess would be the elevation on, uh, that's A seven, I guess.
A seven.
The upper elevation.
The south.
Yeah, um, either of the sides where it's the country beige.
Yep.
Um, is that actually flat? Because you you have representation of like a vertical siding or horizontal siding, but there's no.
So that's a, that that's gonna be a combination of flat panels with trim, so there'll be some really.
No, you know, there won't be a texture to it, say, it'll be a smoother.
It'll be smooth, yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So the solar panels, um, I assume you would provide the dry, the the layer of the solar panels, but that's.
I can pull that up if you want.
It would be just. At that building, it would be what you, you're looking at for the parking lot, right, then that.
Yes, this is the parking.
Yeah, and it would be on the, what you see on the roof, and it would be on the. The the dormers that are there, that they would have.
They would have, they would have.
On the south facing, they would have solar panels, but on New York basically, they would not.
We, actually, let me, I can pull up the board, would you, the, um, dollar plan, I believe it's on all, uh, all. So we, Eric, just I'm sorry, but we. Yeah, the solar, the A eight eight. So this is, uh, sheet number PV two. Uh, this is the solar panel.
Little bit there too.
For, uh, eighteen out there, they'll selling one and two. Uh, as you can see, or maybe, I don't know, you have. Um, the blue squares represent the solar panels that are gonna be on some roofs and. They're on every, uh, every side of each building.
Yeah, okay, you know. One doesn't need them, it's not about solar panels on a, on a slater roof. On every roof surface, no, no.
I will stay further, I'm just.
So.
Particulars.
Something with a generally, generally southern exposure. You're not gonna put it on the northern exposure, don't put solar panels, nobody put solar panels on. People know this radio, like, oh, I'm doing, they're on doer, so. This roof has pitch. Okay, the side that, on this building, building one, the side that faces the train tracks, it's not gonna get sunlight. For driving a solar. Now, anyone that does the analysis would would tell you that a solar engineer.
Same.
So. That's, I'm just believing in what you said, there's like solar panels on each of the roofs. No. There.
Do you have?
That needs to be in there.
Do you have the proposals that were given to you for for? Installing solars on these three buildings, or is this just? They cost us X dollars, we think you can do it, because originally you said you shouldn't do it.
Not.
Yeah. I'm sorry, see, right, see, right, installed, there's, there were no those needs.
Yes, we're, we asked for the the detailed breakdown of the solar installation, now it was in, I'm next at birth. Nine, not road, but yeah, of course, for this one as well. And then there's. Obviously, the rock was a, like, if you were a homeowner or a building owner who said. Solar company would come in and install my solar on a noise facing roof, they would say, you know. We can tell, um, so. Anyway, um. That's discouraging, but hopefully that's out of date, and someone did look at it. Said he was putting it in the right places, so. Uh, and the other building, building two, I was the front of it also, this is somewhere would be very similar, it was. It is a generally southerly facing.
Yep.
Uh, and then a northern side that should not have any solar panels on it. Well, the good news is it'll reduce cost of payments, and maybe you can have some. But they may, it may just be as simple as putting more panels. On the surface that does do this. So that is useful. And the little question is, are there panels on the. The E's. Far they've done, you know. But that would probably be the best. In that location for building one, the the side of. The E's there, on the left side of the E's is probably the best. Solar. Deal. So, um, you you said, on the comparative stuff, you said for this project, for eighteen. The siding is similar.
Yes.
The lap siding is, colors, the same way the board and diamond colors. Are similar. It's not the burners new trim, the roofing is asphalt, the same.
Yes.
Supposed. The color is Appalachian instead of charcoal. And what did you say about the stone, you didn't mention something about this.
The extent of the stones stayed the same.
The extent, so stones, no change.
Okay, same interior.
Which it was, and then the first one was the same material, they just wanted a, that's the system. It it. You know, so it's kind of inciting, you know, like, it's ideally just somebody come up on the train side and. It's more of an aesthetic, best maybe HPC. Best to deal with that one, I think it's sign of the time, like. Uh, aesthetically.
And the same process are made, both to what we were originally.
I can't speak for that, I'm sorry.
It's bank card.
Say us.
Well, we get the detail, but you need to tell us for each site and and you need to consider, you know, it's. It's like, you don't wanna leave any stone unturned when you're trying to save, but so. Okay, great. Is that good, can we move on to burn?
Yes. We can move on to burning.
Okay. It's new exhibit, or not new exhibit, but this exhibit will be A nine.
I'm sorry, I might have missed eight, what was eight?
Eight was the, uh, E D, it went the, uh, P D, uh, full full care voltage.
Yep.
And A nine is a colored elevation for six and three. Okay, so similar to the other sites.
And and bear with me, this is A eight is the, uh, color of elevation. Uh, left and right state and, uh, is associated with the. A nine, ten, A eight, A nine, you know.
A nine, you're in. Eleven sixteen two thousand. Last, this being two thousand three three.
They say original, I think the preliminary made conceded that, the original. Abandoned preliminary and final.
Similar to, uh, the other sites, we have the same, the original material proposed in the same color palette. We met with HPC, this is A ten. And the date on the plate ten is eleven eighteen two thousand. Materials stayed the same, but the finishes were, uh, like the production HPC. And then the last elevation here at A eleven. Date on that is four seventeen two thousand twenty five. Again, same changes as the previous sites, we went from metal roof paint to asphalt. Uh, vinyl board event siding, vinyl lap siding. The window style changes, um, remain the same from this design. As opposed to the H P C approved design, and again, we tried to select colors from the. The vinyl palette that reflected um, what was selected as part of coordination with H P C.
Can you, architectural, can you explain your choice? Of the Appalachian gray, which I guess is darker than what. Like I see how dark that is, right? And the Mount Airy one was, if you flip back to A three. Which is on that easel, which is the original. Which is the. Because that one's quicker, right? That one is supposedly charcoal.
Charcoal, yes.
And. Then you explained the rationale for.
So the, the charcoal selection was uh, more of a bluish. The siding here is, and including the gray is one of the blues, kind of cool color tones, so one of the cool color. Uh, the Appalachian sky, and then we go back to the. The Appalachian sky actually has a couple of different color tones in it, it has some. Some browns, some greens to kind of, I mean, a little, it's a little more. Warm brown tone, which complements the. Sorry, cobblestone trim and the graphite, which is kind of like a green tone.
The cobblestone trim is new, right?
Cobblestone true is new, yes.
I guess I just, that's fine, it's aesthetic, can we just make sure that Dan Lincoln? Particularly comments or resumes the choice of color for. Um, you know, H P C for um, the, these two last projects, just. Doesn't. Point, point that out and make sure the. Explicitly. Denise, that he was, Dan, that he explicitly knows to look at the, the roof colors. On the three projects.
I'm sorry.
Just, just, he's looking at a lot of things, I'd just like to make sure he explicitly looks at the color choice of the roofs. It, it doesn't affect the aesthetic, the aesthetic, and um. To, to see if he confirms, you know. We have your opinion.
Very much like we.
He's got a lot to look at in a short period of time, and I just wanna be sure he. Explicitly looks at that, okay?
So all of these drawings were completed more than six months ago. Yeah, six months ago. And I'm just trying to understand the timing, you had to have thought about it, considered it, and taken time. To create them, so seven months ago, so seven months ago, you knew. That the. The expenses were that much higher. Well, but you knew in the summer, but you made these proposals back in April, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable.
Which summer? The summers or the one?
Saying, changing the materials. For the rocks. So I've, I've, I'm just uncomfortable, again.
When we change, we're concerned over the summer.
They're dated. That, that's the spring, not.
Yeah, but it wasn't.
No, but the point is, we're, a- a- again, just because you have no numbers, and it strikes me that. You're saying that we're running so much. High cost because we have the rock issue, but you were already proposing this. Before you realized the extent of your rock issue.
You said, you said you realized the rock issue in June.
Yeah, it was.
I think I understand. Questions that you're either not listening for, and, and not giving us the answer that we're trying. To, to get, and yes, it was a little defensive with me, because I'm uncomfortable. With the fact that we're being given numbers with no backup, but, but this was prepared. The changes were prepared, have been considered at least seven months ago. And July, August, September, October, four months ago is when you realized you had the problem. So yes, I do question.
Uh, and, and just to share my perspective, I did not realize that this is within the purview of a, of a plan. So this is why the disconnect is here, but as I said before, I'm gonna provide the.
Yeah, it's fixed, it sounds like what happened was, you were, you were gonna be, gonna have a gap. You know, it was probably two million plus, something like that. You knew about it, when this came up, you know, as you did the numbers. You planned to, how to mitigate the gaps. You did due diligence through cooperative, you know, optimizing the building materials, and then wham, you got hit with the, the. The rock. Which just piled on instead of a two and a half million dollar gap, you know, five million dollar gap or something. Sounds like that's what happened, but. It, it's not like, oh, we hit the rock, and like now we have to change the material, it sounds like now the, the time was. We were gonna have a gap, let's mitigate the gap, let's change the materials, and then whack, we got hit in the summer, that's all we're saying, in terms of the timing. Um, the events, and how we're making.
I apologize for being different, but that's conceivable, I don't know if that's the facts, but.
But that would have been prudent, it would have been prudent to say, here's a gap. How can we change the materials, do the plan, and then, then, then you got slammed, you know, with the wrong. Okay. Anything else about this? Site that we, uh, there's probably a seller for this. Somewhere, this, this is, is this a similar one where, similar to the first one, where it's got a?
Yes, but there's also. Yes, so we had, so there's two things, there's solar on the flat roof part, it also has the same carpet as mine Brook Road.
Right.
But there's also a few solar panels on the solar roof facing burners app. As well.
Last stand about that, and maybe not, for the solar panels. Where you're planning to put them on the roof, but what we can ask Danny too about that, because it may be. Ineffective too.
Were the dormers just decorative?
The dormers were just decorative.
Yeah, so let's ask Dan, if Dan's okay with, like, it's no big deal, they were the dormers.
And well, they're decorative, but it also creates up a multi-hundred foot.
Well, that's why we want to ask Dan, you know, about that explicitly, if he hadn't gotten to this third drawing, he obviously worked with you heavily on the first one. He's comfortable with that. And I'm, uh, and there must be cost savings, not building the dormer. Uh, at all, but it's just, oh, so we can put some solar down there. That's the kind of detail. And, and just to confirm, so that, that view of the building is a general view from the middle of your building, right?
Are you telling, this is the front facade?
We were, yeah, did that for record exhibit, oh, I'm sorry. And you're like, is a different. The front facade of A eleven.
It matches.
This is the front facade as well, these are, these are the same elevation.
In, in that. Um. I don't know how to describe it, first, the first set. Or the second set of windows coming from below. That portion. Appears different.
The bottom.
Yeah, you broke the window.
This whole section appeared different from that whole section.
Exhibit that was submitted.
It's hard to see even more here.
A ten, H P C exhibit. On the. Sec, second set of. Windows, yes, from the left. Is different than the proposed A eleven. Front facade, second set of windows, it's seven hundred thirty. Well, both, that's.
The same, but. The, the key is on the third one, which is A eleven, you see the dark color difference. That, that's, that, no, next to it, that.
This.
That's light on the other. That's light on the other picture, yeah. I think that's. But still, it doesn't address the fact that structural. Dimension. So, just. It's like, I was saying, it's like those games, like, what are the two different suits in these two? All right, is there anything else about this, uh? Yeah, we're, we already reminded you, and you agreed that cobblestone, um. Is in front of it, the cobblestone. And what, um. That's cheaper, or like what?
It's just a different name.
Before, didn't supply, so it was some other material before, but now you've made it's this material, so it's better. It didn't exist in the, in the center.
It did, well, it was a different color, because it's a different, we're going from fibers and that to vinyl, so it was all.
So you, you can fix your chart, in your chart it says, uh, the cobblestone trim. The trim itself does not exist. In the new, in the old.
I don't know what chart you're looking at, but.
And it sounds like it did exist in some fact, some material. And you're altering the material to be cobblestone.
We'll reconcile that.
Exactly, just point that out, just reconcile, it is identified as only for this project, and. Whatever the purpose was to, for the change, that's kind of your. Whereas, when you're reconciling, why, why was that change?
I'm getting confused, because I don't.
Well, the cobblestone trims.
Some, something is also.
All right, you'll figure out, if there's a difference, just. Uh, anything else on this project, I think that is the south. Sort of the south facing, it is, um. Exposure. And then. I guess there's.
Okay, pull up one more.
Uh, thirteen, fifteen, that's nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Well, and twelve was the solar one. This is the solar.
I didn't.
I can't see.
And so, south is the bottom?
The south is.
That's the, that's the primary. Thing we're seeing, okay?
So, and then, so there's solar panels, so there's slope.
Yeah.
As well, um, and then the solar panels on the flat roof. And this is the same parapet. That I showed you in the section for. So the panels.
The eastern.
No.
I guess. Just on the.
There's some.
Southern parapet and, uh, or whatever we're calling it, and, um, on this one, we went. Down to O'Kine, and I'm. Losing the. Dates, or whatever. I think it makes it a little more monolithic, that's why.
It's a very long.
So I, I think part of the requirement should be that there was a cost of, was of not doing the dormers, I guess. But is it articulated, that they were just decorative sitting on the roof? It's not like the. Doesn't stick out.
Sorry, this, this what stick out?
The building, the building not straight.
The building's not straight, so. It's just, you're gonna run the parapet around instead of putting a dormer, I definitely wanna, we. But it'd be the seat of financials behind that. But we're doing, we're doing the menu there, so what? And, and because there's an aesthetic here, we wanna know what was saved. To give us that aesthetic. So, yeah, now it's just for anybody. Can't believe it's very functional, it's, it's a fairly small area, even putting cells in that area is doing. Right, you should ask them also, just on solar engineering, are they? I can see the drawings and how much they're elevated, sort of, just that they're slanted. They should have, when you, when you have a parapet like that, you should have an opinion about whether the cells could be hired, so the parapet's not shielding them. Shading them. Um, at least close to the parapet, it, it should probably be elevated, now, as you go in towards the interior of the building, it's not. It's not as important, but like. I haven't looked at it in detail, but please have them address. That aspect of it, you wanna maximize the solar. Anything else, under, anything else of note that, on this?
No, that was.
Building, we reconciled. Any, any questions in this?
No, I think, oh, I thank the first chair, and so thank you guys for your.
It's not a lot of work, division, but you're. We just did a very short map, trying to quantify some of the changes. And we didn't. If you put the dormers out on this site, because of. Plans that were submitted to us.
At the dormers.
No, I would request that we get, we can get a copy of all these exhibits.
Okay.
That they presented.
Mister Chairman, we can submit the exhibits, but it also sounds like they will be modified.
I know.
Some extent anyway, so we'll submit. We will submit the exhibits, but in addition to that, we'll have whatever changes need to be made.
I think you're gonna have some spirit here, so why don't just go ahead and. Get them. Are, are these staying with us?
You know, I'm not sure if even the historic preservation has, as you said, really show.
So, especially for Dan.
Think this exhibit is.
I think for Dan, you definitely need the set of the.
Yes.
To be.
And we'll coordinate this, so that she has a link to PDFs of all of these, and if Dan needs paper copies, we'll get Dan. Yes, yeah, whatever the needs are lost, they can.
That, that's a shortcut, must be.
Please, you need access to.
Not just maybe.
What belongs? Was that? Were you gonna say some?
Oh, I was gonna say something.
Well, we wanna have questions from the. We wanna have questions from.
That's what I'm waiting for, I mean, you certainly wanna have our public, have a, to get questions tonight, even though they'll be back. Um, and then questionable whether. You know, it, it makes sense that public comment or not, because while they'll be back, we don't know if our members, they know what we're doing here tonight, it may or may not be that.
All right, so we're gonna progress to. Questions for, we'll have two big questions for these workers, as mentioned, there will be subsequently, I'm not sure you can bear. Questions, you just have to identify yourself, but not be swum.
Long go.
Short walk. If it comes down. If it comes down.
Jack Col, asleep too. Jack Col, twenty mount error.
Jeff.
Col, C O L L A R.
Twenty mount error, that's right next door to eighteen, no.
That is. It is, you remember.
You need to get the notes, yeah.
So. As far as questions, real simple one, could you possibly, when you come back, show the second building, so that we can see the side?
I do have it.
Oh, you do have it? Okay, yeah, if you could share that just to, to see. That building is from patient, it's oriented patient, it's proximity, the number twenty was an issue. Uh, to the. Seven, big. And, and windows and their location, these are the other windows. Well.
You're outdoing yourself.
Like the knee wall, the rear seat walls.
So this will be A thirteen.
A thirteen.
The three lucky, as the building numbers do, eighteen, no.
Building number two, full elevation, eighteen, Mary.
I think David, April seventeen.
No, well, this, or is this the?
That's correct.
We're going right to the. Okay, the value, the engineered version.
Well, I believe the south side elevation, this one is the one that faces very proud, right?
Yeah.
The, the configuration of windows are black there, is stayed completely the same.
I'm sorry.
The configuration of windows are black there, um, peak, south elevations are mainly same. There's no.
The sun closest to his.
Yeah, probably, yeah. Very. Back to the window, remains same. If, if I make the, uh, solar panels. There are all. I'm sorry, there are. Sorry, right, that's what's getting, the, um. But there's no layer already. Anticipated problem for immediate increase in labor. Uh.
This, this house is being blocking us from getting in those solar panels, I, and they're, they're right next, their house would be in those, so. I, you know, it's, I'm sorry, house.
Every different. Those are the. That's why.
Well, we don't think, we, the. It's, it's, make sure the panels are gonna yield. Decent power, that's. And I noticed they didn't take away the dormers. Here. Basically, different. Fingered up panels, different. That's. Right. So in eighteen, they didn't, you didn't take the dormer, they, but. Bernard, you did.
Any other? Oh.
Good evening, we're tier one forty-one, mine Brook Road. First of all, thank you very much for all your time, I know it's a thankless job, you get a lot of time, especially you, Robert, been here for a long time, if anyone. Sign off, absolutely, thank you very much, Chairman. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Um, they do a quick study, it's called a, uh. Declination of the sun. Like with your situation, the sun just doesn't come like this and go like this, it changes throughout the year, they do a quick study, you did it Princeton University. For some buildings who did down there, because it will melt plastic, it will melt cars. Okay, it will change throughout the year. Now, we're seeing it now, changing, uh, especially near roadways, like Bernard's Avenue, just wanna make sure. When it's coming down, is it gonna hit a car coming out on the, uh, intersection there? Just wanna double check, it's not that hard of a study.
Talking about solar or.
Reflection coming in and heat also, that you picked up also.
Um, so that should be part of a solar engineer.
Normally, someone would assault, be able to do that pretty quickly, it's, it's not that hard. The other thing is, the partnership is a little frazzled right now.
Um, it has to be.
The question sounds a bit like comments, can you raise your rating again, I swear.
Oh, sure.
Uh, you swear to God or affirm testimony about what you may have already given, is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, all you got.
Thank. I, I had gotten in there already, but we, but can happen two minutes. Well, you hear me, my thing is.
One of the things that you asked, um. Word member Geller, uh, was a lot of information. I think what you should probably ask for is. From the previous. Guess submit. Package. What were they gonna give you here? It's a small package, tell you what, you know, whether it's metal panels, whatever it was. How many year warranty, the whole thing, and get a, you know, sample of it. And you compare it to what they're doing on the new stuff. This way, they're gonna tell you what kind of warranty was on the metal.
Right.
This is what they're gonna tell you on, on this, so you have something writing right there. It's this middle package, that's what we did throughout, for everything. Okay, that's, that's one of the big things. The same thing with the vinyl.
Go ahead. Who was we?
Meaning you should ask. We being the borough, should ask for some middle packages. I would think. Because right now, it's like, okay, we, we don't know what we're gonna have here, we don't know what we're gonna have here, you're gonna have a package, this is what was proposed here. You know? You have the actual document. And now, what the change is gonna be made to. So you can make a, you know.
Informed.
Informed decision. And you know what, you can, you can go to whoever in the town, whatever it says, hey, we have to do this for this reason, X, Y, or Z. But you have the documentation in your hands.
Yeah, no, we do want the, I think we're gonna make it simpler, we just kinda wanted to search it a few more columns, but that.
Well, it's a middle package, usually it's just like one or two sheets, it's like, okay, we're using this shingle here, we're using this, this is what it is, boom. This is what you had. This is, it's really, it's really pretty simple. Uh, the colors, it's, that's, um, I'm an engineer, so.
Make reference to partnership.
Well, the partnership is. Burnsville Borough.
So the.
And, and, and affordable housing and everything, and what I'm saying to you is, okay, what are the books? I made a, you know, perfect, uh. A comment before, um. When was the? Borings made? Right, and then whose decision was it just to go, okay, we're just gonna blast? Who went out and said, yeah, we're gonna lay out money? Okay? Was it made with the borough as a partner? And is it a problem engineering wise, is it, you know, did they actually look at the? The borings, which you had three over three hundred feet? And is it an E and O situation, errors and omissions? They missed something. As a partner, you know? Gotta take a hit sometimes. It's something to look at. Get the chronology down. You know, we need to house it. It's required, everybody's in a tough position, but we have to work together. And we can't do, yeah, you can't, you know, do things here and do things here, you know, you gotta come to the board. That's what you guys are here for. To get, you know, informed for us. And I appreciate all the time and effort that you're doing for it, because you're not getting paid for it, that's for sure.
Good to see you again, see you, see you, see you.
Uh, I have a question, not for you, but for Bob. And it may be for you, was it? Was it often gone, kind of gone all through this stuff, that somebody said, you know, you're gonna need to come back for, to the planning board, or? A supplemental, you know, please adjusted. Diane, was it kind of the assumption going along that? I'm trying to understand, is it going along that, oh, no one thought about the fact that if you change your materials, you have to come back? Until like, oh, two months ago, we figured this out, that. Oh, we're gonna have to come before, again, before the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, answer your question, I was asked, we're approvals, basically.
Oh. Like a field change, this, or?
Basically, yeah, but it was after we had, uh, through resolution, she combines. At that point, it's. It's in. It's not in our hands.
Yeah.
So.
So it's you, so you're the, 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 uh, the, the guy that had to raise it again and say, you know, actually, I can't do that, I, you've gotta go before the board. And. But, or that was a consequence of a discussion.
Yeah, it's like a little.
Yeah. Then. Didn't remember when that happened. How long ago, because how long ago did, did the applicant, you know, that we have to come before the planning board?
The applicants, maybe it was, but not that we can't, I can't, but.
We can deduce it, but what's the reality, when did the, when, when did you realize you got all the months?
Okay. The other one. Well, chicken, no.
Yeah, the last one.
As I recall, was first the, the changes, and then we were able to have discussions. And included that the changes in there themselves, the, the, I should say, the. Material. Changes.
Hmm.
Uh, uh, prompted that, no, that, that has to be done by amended approval. And then separately, I think we then heard, there were gonna be solar panels. I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
We, that already concluded that they need to come back.
Right.
And then it made, I think, sense, well, the solar panel should be part, parcel of the amended approval request along with the material changes.
Yeah, I say the term. Real. So not for me to decide whether it's a serial change or not, because.
Someone would look, if the solar is saying it's a, a depreciation, you know, it's a re. You're saving the money too, so, you know, it's always gonna be one of those financial. Very lost.
Yeah, I don't know what happened on solar, on zones. Solar, and what, you know, they built these things and became a way, but it's all, I don't know.
Oh, it was part of amended.
From solar.
So, it's just, um.
Building. After. The decision was, uh, uh. If, uh. We were told they hadn't been suspended.
All right.
Uh, it made sense to add it for the entire application.
Right, I just, I'm, I'm not sure it's in our. Like it does, but it's not in our group, if someone would just wanted to put solar panels on, we. We always suggest it, so it's kinda like, okay, here we go.
Well, if you're not, if you're gonna put the solar panels on, it's not gonna change the, the design, that's one, actually, if you're changing the design. That's been pretty.
Curious. Because the people who did the. Proposal. It doesn't seem like it was done with any seriousness, these probably stop and stuff they do on the computer. But if they're putting the panels on. Slow roofs, is that really who you want to be doing this? So, this is a proposal that, to me, is just here, here's something to bring to the board. But it could add, I have no idea, I've never put solar panels, it, what did, I also have a million dollars to the free projects. That we still have to float the bond for. But it's really not doing what it's supposed to do.
The point is to look at the financials of the software. Here's the, here's, the whole thing, you don't do it. It, it's not like, you, uh, there, it, it has to make sense financially.
Bring your, over time, over. It's gonna get into finance differences, the finances where it all.
Right.
The finances for the solar, or maintenance and long-term profitability on the rental.
Yeah.
That's something that's.
I think that's the point, is it not be part of a shortfall or bonded issue, or.
Right, but it's like.
Shouldn't be.
Is that? You added something, when, while you're changing a project to reduce power, at the same time you came in, you added new things that incurred more power. So if your current shortfall is two point four, and you eliminated all solar. Does that? Increase the shortfall even more?
Well, we don't, you know, no solar is included in the shortfall, but, but, but I understand there.
Yeah.
They, they should be treated distinctly, I think.
Can I get my private board to add like two other elements?
And what is the benefit, who, who, who will fund it? The benefit and all that stuff. So.
The next meeting, November thirteen. Are you gonna be obeyed to get all?
Yes, I think we're reached in.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's all already been presented, and reviewed by all people, so it's just a matter of taking.
Wanted to ask twenty so that when.
We didn't get, we have to put it into a form that you're asking for, but we.
I think we need to get you, we need to get Dan's. Opinion to your, um. Because it could influence something that you're doing, and so we need to, we need to. We, we request that he. Examine these, we have to get the color documents, so we're, we're, we're studying. We, we try to make time to get to it.
Right, so, and another way of saying that is, even if we give you a November thirteenth date. You still have to get everything to us, and more importantly, to the historic preservation committee, so that they can kind of comment down on it, because they've only commented. On version two and not version three.
So we need to expedite that, there's a deadline for the meeting to get things posted, right?
Yes.
Anything they create has to be.
Ten days.
Ten days, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Whatever.
Will, eh? To get these materials that the historic. Mission needs to review. Well, what question? Are they gonna need to review the physical samples, or will they be at the meeting and probably bring them here?
He probably knows what the physical.
I'm sure.
Look like, I think the key is to get him the, the two, the VE drawings, you know, the two, the.
We, we can send him that.
Yeah, and then, and then separately, we need to. Let him know what the situation is.
Yeah, and the question is, Laura, is just, do you? Erin and her team have coordinated directly with Dan previously, when we were working on. This, or the, the exhibit twos, do you want it to go be routed through you to Dan, or do you want us to just?
They should be. CC, you.
Yes, well, okay.
Of course, that, that would be very true, you can just directly communicate with Dan, making sure Denise is.
We have this, everyone's.
Yes.
Straight with the girl is the best. The, the, uh, I believe we have at least one member of the public who still wishes to. Of the seed. At least one. So I think we're done with questions, now we're back with open comments. And, uh, yeah, yes, did you agree, and you swear to God or affirm a testimony about the gate is. And again, to the record, your name is. Jack Col, based, based in that area, and that twenty mount area, we wrote Burnsville. Um. So, just a couple of comments, so Bob, I think you, like, you just mentioned about the solar panels and the kind of, the, the role that you guys have, uh, from my understanding. It's the visual impact as well that you guys are improving, and. All three of those. Plans, when you look at all of them independently, I mean, one has a. Large visual impact, and that's a, a, a in my area, in my opinion, so I'd ask you to, can, whatever, can ask, but I, my statement is. This isn't really. A, a. Good-looking improvement to the town, everyone's gonna come past this, it's gonna be a double whammy, it's gonna be vinyl siding. Plus, the, um, the, the solar panels on the top, it's gonna be a significant. Degradation to the look of the building, which was a very good-looking building. So, when the new plans come along, I think it should be. I mean, my statement is, it should be rejected. Because this is. We're having significant downgrade to what we have before.
So, I, we're just commenting, we could say, to whatever construction, they could make it solar-ready. At your discretion, at the applicant's discretion, but not. But I think that would be as far as we go, because. I still don't think we have purview or so, or solar.
Not even from a. Visual impact?
I do want to. Maybe, but once it's visual, I, I, well, I would, I would just not put solar up and then I would.
Yeah, uh, uh, if it, if. If it relates.
Let's ask Dan, are you, do you have the Dan questions, so?
Yeah, but if, 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 if you are. Determinated, if it's an impact visually, that is within your purview.
Yes. If, if they're applying with the solar, then the visual impact is within the. What about the fact that it makes the units more ex. Or less expensive? Because it tends to a, the electric.
It's, we're, we're not, that's not our, no, how they're doing, there are also some planning, that's not our purview, that's why I. On every event, considering, as a planning board, as a, as a basis, the, uh. For, for the, um, changes, but it's a practical reality. But sort of individual costs and profits for the board are planning.
They're, they're individually, these units, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, yeah.
So the solar system, solar would be.
There's too many conversations going on.
It's a tiny solar system, this little individual solar, so. Ask Dan, for this bigger point, we did mention that, that was one of the items we wanted to communicate to Dan, the solar. Ask Dan, let's make a point, we did mention that, that was one of the items we wanted to communicate to Dan, the solar. And, um. Yeah, if it's submitted with a request, then it's visual, and we we have a say in terms of how it's initially built.
The. For clarification. Is the cost of the solar. Born as part of the whole project, or is that separate and a part of the cost unassociated to the partnership that's on with the developer? Who pays for that?
You need the answer to that, so they know, but the answer is, are the solar enhanced, yeah, are the solar enhancements basically separately? Accounted for and funded, especially from the standpoint of what Nancy is thinking. I mean, some of it. Correct, the room accessibility, you know, some of it is constructed by the rest, the solar. It's one thing to be solar-ready, it's another thing to actually put the solar panels up there, and the whole point is. What's what's the dealer with? The solar? It. And it could be something, someone someone mentioned that it could just makes the. Units more appealing rent-wise, because there is a grid-type solar system that included in the unit, you know, and you they.
Or.
Yeah, it depends on how it's funded. It's their own, they own it, so it's making charge, they can put the meter in and charging whatever they want.
Mr. Chair, I I don't know if there was, were any other members of the public want to make comment whether we're here this evening or not?
I do.
Yeah. With the chair's permission, I evolve.
Yeah.
I'm Melanie Deportier. I live on one forty-one My Brook Road.
Please raise your right hand, you swear to God or affirm the testimony about the gate is a true.
Yes.
And please proceed.
I am not an engineer. I'm D E, capital P, O O R, T E, R E.
Thank you, I was not a.
Correct, Melanie.
So, so I'm not an engineer, but I would like to know that why do, does the town? Have to change the aesthetic of the building that you already. Um. Approved, approved. Um, because they didn't do their due diligence and do the core samples. When you are across the street from a quarry, what did you think you were gonna hit? I I I don't think the town should eat that cost. And now you're gonna put a vinyl siding. In Bernardsville? And and have the maintenance on vinyl siding and shingles roofs? Shingles do not last as long as the. The, um, metal roofs. Let's be real. We have to put a new roof on our house. I mean, it's it's. It's not gonna last thirty years. Sh- shingles don't last thirty years. Then you're gonna have that, and you're changing the colors, and it it just. It's not a good look for our town. Not a good look. And I know we have to do this. My husband struggled with it when he was on the town council. It's something that the town has to do, but it has to match the town. And and this isn't. And I don't think you should pay for it. I don't think the townspeople should pay for it when you didn't do your due diligence. It's it's your fault, basically. I mean, you hit the rock, then you should have come back to the town and say. I hit rock, we have to, we have to do something, not go ahead and blast. My house shakes from your blasting. I mean, I don't know if my well is gonna be damaged from your, from your blasting. I don't know. I don't know. Happy now? Not happy?
Any. Further comments from our professionals? Okay. Um. Any discussion? Right now, where we're sitting is we're suggesting that we're, they're, they'll be returning, we'll carry it, you know, the. Comments?
We can't be here on thirteen, so please make the right choices for us.
That's. Well, I'm gonna bring a bag of gravel. The blasting.
You can zoom, you can watch.
Watch.
Now the better things do.
Yeah.
Be Santa Claus that night.
I wouldn't have.
Gonna do my son's. And the vehicle's right here, not that nice, if they, we've covered a lot around the. Wall. Okay.
Our formal announcement, Mr. Chairman, again. Return, return without. Further notice to November thirteenth. November thirtieth, seven thirty PM, the same location, Minnesota.
I think that one of the keys, you know, I just, the 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 solar stuff kind of can. Use already, kind of challenge. Us here, and. It's kind of important, you need to part mentalize that, perhaps. Is that that? Or not important? Just the but. So, thank you, thank you very much. Well, so for soon.
Eric. So you need to. Yeah. So that we know that it's in this year. Yeah. And then, like, when you're finished, just call them all.
So. There's the. And if we're personally, you want to turn it off, and let us, we're certain if you want to turn it off. Some of it is. Here we go.
Yeah.